We're reconvening back into regular session. And with that, the Kenmore City Council is now in session. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness.
Here.
Councilmember Nanuski.
Here.
Councilmember Curtis.
President.
Mayor Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Sperry.
Here.
Councilmember Herbert.
Here. It's not often I get to do this. So if you would please stand and... Sherry, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(laughter) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. If there are no changes, the agenda will stand approved as written. Now, the next item on the agenda, I tell you what, I've been looking forward to this one since last summer. It's not often we get to do something like this. And I understand that Mrs. LeBorne, you're a cradle robber. I think I remember that from last year. I had the honor last year of celebrating her 100th birthday.
Wow.
In, I think it was September. And I had the pleasure of going to their house and presenting her with a proclamation from the city. And so she mentioned that they were having their 75th wedding anniversary in May. And I said, "I would love to do a proclamation for them." And so, with that, whereas it was Thanksgiving Day in 1940, when a teenage boy jumped off the train in Kalispell, Montana. He was moving from town to town, following the work and looking for adventure. It was the post-depression era, and work was not always easy to find. But he wanted to eat, and he had to find a job. And whereas, it happened that there was an opening at the bowling alley for a pinsetter. He had never bowled and had no idea what that was, but he knew that he was a fast learner, and he could do it. Several of the pinsetters were women, and one attractive young lady caught his eye. And it wasn't long before he was talking to her and making friends. And whereas, this was the beginning of Harvey LeBorne and Evelyn McFeeters' long life together on May 22nd, 1942. They were married. And whereas, it wasn't long before Evelyn was expecting their first child. But World War II was in progress, and Harvey was drafted into the Army. Evelyn went to stay with her parents, and he went off to boot camp. And whereas, when the war was over, they bought a little house in Kenmore in 1946 for approximately $3,500, with nearly five acres. And their house payment was $35 a month.
Wow.
Soon, their second child was born, then a third, then a fourth, and finally, a fifth. Whereas, their children remember Mom and Dad always being involved in the kids' interests, taking the kids camping, traveling, being active in PTA, Boy Scouts, among many others. And whereas, soon, the 50s turned into the 60s and 70s, and one by one, each of the children graduated high school, got married, and started families. And their first grandchild was born in the spring of 1967.
Wow.
Whereas Evelyn and Harvey lived in Alaska for a while, but kept the family home in Kenmore, with several family members took care of the house until they returned. And whereas, in the mid-'80s, Harvey retired, and they moved back home to Kenmore. And whereas, Evelyn and Harvey celebrated another milestone with their 50th anniversary in 1992. And with a party at the American Legion Hall in Bothell, after both the 25th and 50th anniversary parties, they went on a second and third honeymoon to Victoria. And whereas, on May 22nd, 2017, Evelyn and Harvey LeBorne will celebrate their 75th wedding anniversary with 25 descendants. Twenty-three are still living, including five children, 11 grandchildren, seven great-grandchildren, and two great-great-grandchildren. Harvey's favorite saying is, "Life goes on."
Oh, yeah.
Now, therefore, I, David Baker, Mayor of the City of Kenmore, on behalf of the City Council, am pleased to, get to the next page here, wish longtime Kenmore residents, Evelyn and Harvey LeBorne, a happy 75th wedding anniversary on May 22nd, and may they celebrate with many more anniversaries and birthdays with their friends and family. So, I'm going to walk over and present you with this. And I think, Leslie, you're gonna get a good picture of this. This is just not very often that we get to do something like this.
Wow, yeah.
I'm sorry, I ripped a ligament off my kneecap, so I'm just like a week or two off three years old.
Do you want your little thing? We should probably stand up.
So, before, before they get up and leave, I have a little bit more to say.
Uh-oh.
I just wanted to recognize the fact that here, so, we have Evelyn and Harvey. We have daughter Kathy and her husband Bobby. Daughter Shirley. Son Ron and wife Leann. Son Marvin. And they had a son Victor that passed away in 1975, but his wife Rita is here. So, thank you all for coming. Wonderful parents. (applause) Thank you all very much. Absolutely.
(inaudible)
Did you get a good picture? I know we'll see you back here in another year or two. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, one more proclamation. Whereas, on the average, 700 people die each year in boating-related accidents in the U.S., with the vast majority of those accidents caused by human error and poor judgment and not by the boat, equipment, or environmental factors. And whereas, a significant number of boaters who lose their lives by drowning each year would be alive today if they'd worn their life jackets. And whereas, the City of Kenmore is bounded by 7.8 miles of shoreline along Lake Washington, the Smamish River, and Swamp Creek. And whereas, a large number of Kenmore residents of all ages engage in recreational boating. And whereas, the mission of the United States Coast Guard Auxiliary Flotilla 21, located in the North Shore area, is to promote and improve recreational boating safety by teaching boating safety courses and conducting vessel safety checks. Now, therefore, I, David Baker, Mayor of the City of Kenmore, Washington, do hereby proclaim May 20th through 26th, 2017 to be in our community Kenmore Safe Boating and Paddling Week. And we encourage all of Kenmore residents to dedicate themselves to learning about and practicing safe boating, including wearing life jackets. And we will have... Help me, where is it here?
(inaudible).
Pardon?
(inaudible).
Yes, they do. I know, but I'm looking for the names. Where is it?
(inaudible).
Number, I don't, oh, number two, sorry. Dale Vodica and Flotilla 21, and Margaret Singh of Flotilla 24 are here to accept the award. All right. Next item on the agenda is a presentation, Complete Streets Award. Mrs. Oberlefor, City Manager.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Well, I'm really excited about, to talk about this tonight, because the city is getting an award from the Transportation Improvement Board. To give you a little bit of background, there is an entity created by the state of Washington called the Transportation Improvement Board. And every year, they give grants to cities and counties and other jurisdictions for transportation improvements. They hand out millions of dollars every year, many millions of dollars every year, to cities and other jurisdictions across the state. Since incorporation, the City of Kenmore has received tens of millions of dollars from the TIB. But last year, TIB decided to try something a little different. They've been a grant funding agency all these years. They said, "You know what? Let's also give an award. Let's, instead of just, just grants, we actually want to recognize jurisdictions for their commitment, their demonstrated commitment to multimodal safety." And so they announced that award last year, and they were, they gave the award in increments of, all the way up to $500,000, all the way down to $125,000. So, the City of Kenmore, we thought we had a pretty good case, given all that we've been doing for multimodal safety over the last few years. And so, we sort of applied for the award, but we weren't allowed to apply for the award. Somebody had to nominate us. And so we were actually nominated by Washington Department of Transportation, and also by Washington State Department of Commerce. Those two entities nominated the City of Kenmore. And what they looked at, what the Transportation Improvement Board looked at were several criteria. They wanted to look at the quality of the adopted Complete Streets ordinance, which we have. They wanted to look at our level of integration of Complete Streets, the ethic of that, and our planning documents. They wanted to see how our community outreach was, and our engagement with the community was on road plans and projects. They looked at past multimodal projects, and also upcoming multimodal projects. And based on these criteria, and based on the nomination that was given them by Commerce and WashDOT, the city received the highest amount possible for this award. We got the $500,000 award. The Board approved $10.5 million worth of these awards statewide. Only six, and mind you, there's over 200, there's over 200 incorporated cities in the state of Washington, and how many counties? Forty-some-odd counties, I think? And so, of all those cities and counties, and we don't know how many applied, but only six were given the $500,000 level. And of those six, we're in the company of Bellevue, Bellingham, Bothell, Spokane, and Yakima. So those are all pretty big cities compared to us. So we were the smallest to get that award. Next door, Kirkland got $250,000. I'm not seeing Lake Forest Park on here. Not that it matters what our neighbors got. But, anyway, so, I'm just really pleased with, number one, the leadership that the City Council has been showing. I think the award here is a, is a team award, because it took the City Council's direction and leadership to give us the resources we needed to, to apply at this level, and to be awarded at this level. Also, the entire city team, including Leslie and her team in the City Manager's office, our Police Department, what they do on the enforcement side, and last but not least, our Public Works Department, and all the projects and policies they've helped implement under your direction. Brett Schock is our traffic engineer, and Brett Schock has been especially instrumental in all this. And he's the one that took the, the lead on providing the nominating agencies with all the information. So, Your Honor, if it's okay with you, I recommend that you give this award to Brett Schock, our traffic engineer, for all the outstanding work he's done, knowing that it's been a pretty big team effort. I just think this is an indication that we're headed in the right direction, and we appreciate the state for recognizing us. And Brett's job isn't always the easiest job in the world. He's got to balance the need of motorists, and pedestrians, and cyclists, and other modes of travel. And finding that balance is always difficult. But I think that Brett's done a good job at following the Council's direction, and been pretty aggressive on multimodal safety. So, thank you, Brett. I appreciate all you've done.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. You've helped us in many ways. We do appreciate it. All right, next item on the agenda is another presentation. And this one is the Kenmore Waterfront Activity Center Report. Mr. Paul Flynn, President. Deborah Charbnick, Board Member. Sherry Baker, Board Member. Matt Lacy, Executive Director. Polcock Racing, Rowing Foundation. And Dr. Michelle Reed.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Yeah, I think we certainly want to acknowledge that you're, unless you've got something to say, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, everybody, Councilmembers. I'm Paul Flynn. I'm the President of the North Shore Canoe and Kayak Club. I held that post since, power and prestige, since last October or so. And I'm happy to serve and help out in the way I can. This, the report's coming in later than it should, I'm afraid, but I'm here to talk about 2016, and really kind of more of a focus on 2017, which is, you know, it's, we're in May now, so I think it's worth, we're talking about. You know, our vision is really, is very much aligned with, with the City of Kenmore's, and connecting people to the water out there. And, and I think we've, honestly, I think we do a good job of that, and I think 2016's results and the activity we've had really, really go to show that. We've had lots of races, we've had competitions, both casual and recreational training. We've got skills developed, and people getting better in the water, people falling in less often, people being safe, so, no, no issues there. We've had lots of, lots of volunteer time with other organizations, like Adopt a Stream has been borrowing equipment and so forth, and trying to help out in those kind of capacities and, and those ways. Waterfront Fair, we had the inaugural Reven to Kenmore Long Distance Race, put on by Sherry Baker. Did a tremendous job last year, and it was just a hoot seeing people on the water there. It was very casual, a lot of fun, any paddle, you know, boat device that you want, people on there with their dogs and puppies there, and kids crowded in, and from all the way up there and down to, down to Squires Landing here. So, a fun time. I took it on a bicycle on the Smamish Trail there, just to, I can cheer my wife on while she paddled, so it was good. I'm not, I don't have a presentation for you. You do have the report, like I said, so just gonna talk through it, highlights only 2016, going into 2017, and kind of see how that goes. But starting with the Kenmore Rowing Club, and this is, I think, come a tremendous way in 2016, starting out and really turning, generating tons of interest, run out of the park right here nearby, tons of volunteers. We've got, and interestingly, a great connection established with North Shore School District, who want to get people, the kids from the schools into those rowing shells. And, and so we've got some representatives from the school here as well, and are, people talking about, you know, able to talk to this in greater depth than I can. But it's great to see this as an opportunity. Deborah has put on a tremendous amount of effort into this, and brought in a coach, Matt Lacy. Yep, there. And so now we've got, as of April, an actual coach there, you know, helping people on the water, part-time coach, but, you know, again, making that connection through the water, getting those skills in there, and, and doing a great job there. They'll be starting in 2017 with Inglemore High School as kind of a pilot program, if I can, my phrase, not theirs, really trying to establish that as a real rowing program in a competitive capacity. So I think that's a, you know, a great example of really tying the community together with, you know, with waterways. Lots of work to be done, but, you know, kudos to Deborah, who's done a really tremendous job in making that happen. So that's, work started in 2016 all the way through now, and will continue into the future. And then, as well, she put on some connections with the YMCA, for instance, and really helping drive some of those connections. So, again, connections, 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 and that's, that part's going very well. Seattle Flying Dragon Boat Club, we all, if you've been out of Squires Landing, you've seen the big boat with the people hustling that, what does it weigh, 400 pounds? I'm making that number up. It's, it's a big boat. So, they put a lot of people into it, and, and get that up and down the slough, the river there, pretty, pretty fast, and it's, it's fun to watch. Continue to be a strong program. Again, lots of volunteering. I think it's kind of a common theme. The people to go down there and participate tend to come back and help out in other capacities, at the park, at Squires Landing, or they'll come back for other weekends and, and help out. The Dragon Boat's looking for another club, I'm sorry, another boat, pardon me. And that's gonna, you know, help increase their capacity there as well. And they're also going to China. They're going to Macau and Hong Kong this month, at the end of the month, for an international race there. It's 30 people going out there with mixed categories, men and women, 10- and 20-person dragon boat races, so, you know, great international endeavor. Please come back with trophies, so. Let's see. Stand-up paddleboard, kind of, again, another new addition. This is in conjunction with Steve Holmes from the What's Up paddleboard. A business endeavor, but he's there, could help out as well, and contributing boats, and, interestingly, yoga. So if you are good at doing those things on a paddleboard in the water, then, then, you know, please give it a try. It's an interesting connection. But again, that's part of that, getting people out there in nature, as much vitamin D as possible, connected to the waterways. So another way to do it, and you've seen a lot of, a lot more of that, I think, anecdotally, car driving by with a paddleboard on top. I see a lot more of it. I think it's an up, an up-and-coming, growing thing, so, it's well-positioned to have there, very much tying in with, with the overall goal. In fact, one of you, I think one of our Kenmore citizens actually was on paddleboard. He's not part of the club, per se, but he managed to paddle Lake Shalane in record time. See, he can just, to Shalane. I asked him, sent him a note, asking him a text. I didn't get it back and answer it. I think it was around 12 hours, so he blew the previous record away by several hours, so, it's, it's interesting. Kenmore Canoe and Kayak. This is, of course, if you want to see those flat-water sprint canoes out there, those super tippy ones that fall over if you breathe too hard and so forth, as well as the very, very narrow canoes that my daughter Isabella does, they're out there as well. 2016 was a really good, a very good growing period for them, lots of interest, lots of kids in the water, doing a great job, lots of races, Bellingham, Ted Hout, Frostbite, Pacific Cup, which is up in Maple Ridge. It was just great to be a part of that community. I went to, to, twice now, to Maple Ridge. And it's, it's one of those things where it's, it's the community where your, your coaches get together and say, "Hey, I, I'm, I want to, I've got a four-person, you know, kayak over here, I'm, I'm down two guys, how about we swap some kids?" And, "Well, get the kids together and put on an informal, you know, race, get them together." And they get together, and they have that, and build a community that way, and it, it really works, and I really like seeing that. Lots of kids in the water. And I put a little story in there, in my report, which I thought was worth calling out again, about one of our, our young students, the paddler's named Adam, who's, suffers from a condition called anhydrosis syndrome, which is a situation where you can't sweat, which is rather, you know, unusual. And he came from Arizona to here, and this was, the paddling was the first time he could do any sport. And so, it's great to see, "Okay, this is something we can do, get him on the water. If he gets too hot, he just cools down, he's right there on the water and, and able to do that." And so it's kind of nice to see that as well. On the negative side, unfortunately, we did lose our coach, Doug Ritchie, who had been an interim coach for about 16 months and so forth, and he resigned at the end of the year. I think we owe him a debt of thanks for the hundreds of hours he put on the water. He coached my family, lots of other kids out there, and he really connected well with the kids, as well as the parents. And so, I was disappointed to see him go. We do need, you know, it puts us in an awkward situation, we need a good coach. Now, my wife, who's been an assistant coach, Chris Flynn, stepped up, and she said, "Well, I'll keep, I'll keep the kids, the current kids going. She's not, not one who can take on new kids, because that's not her expertise. She'll go from there. In the meantime, it gives us someplace to go. But we've got to get a new coach. We've took some time, a little bit of introspection, thinking, 'Okay, what's the right approach here? Well, how do we do this?'" And we are the North Shore Canoe and Kayak Club. We can't really do without a canoe and kayak coach, so we thought, "Let's, let's go ahead and drive towards this." And that's, and then we have ads out there, and we're looking and trying that. But to get the right skill level, you know, Doug, for instance, was internationally ranked, and been to Nationals many times, and, you know, countless years of coaching. It's hard to get those kind of talents sometimes. So it might take some time. Other events we've got coming up here, I think it's the four major clubs, I talked to all of them, did I miss anybody? I got them. We've got, again, our second now, Reven to Kenmore Long Distance Race, coming up Saturday, so grab your boat and come in. Come in at the last minute, we'd be happy to have you. We got the Waterfront Fair next weekend as well, the YMCA Summer Camp, coming up this summer, again, organized by Deborah. And I'm gonna butcher this, but I'm gonna try anyway. We have interest from a new outrigger club. So the outriggers are the Hawaiian style of canoe, the, we five people, up to eight. Very narrow, very fun. I did it last year, Hawaii. And this is called the Hui Wa'ao Pita Sound Canoe Club. I'm sure I said it perfectly. But they've expressed interest as well, and, you know, maybe joining us, and it seems like a good alignment. We'll talk to them and see how it works out, you know, is it the right location and so forth? But it's, again, the interest is there, is coming in. We've got racing season starting, we've got Bellingham Ski to Sea coming up, in which we have a number of Kenmore residents who are participants. And so those things are, you know, continue to happen. Definitely had some challenges. Unfortunately, we had some thefts from our, our public storage, most storage area out there, which is very disappointing. We've heard rumors that maybe we've caught the alleged- we've caught the alleged thief, we'll see, I don't, I don't know, but unfortunately, we've lost a number of boats, so it's that kind of thing that you try to work through best you can. Of course, again, we need this, we need a coach for our canoe and kayak, and equipment always, you know, it's always one of those things, any, anybody can, you need shells, you need the right paddles, you need the right safety vests, you need the right things for, especially for the canoe and kayak club, and especially for the rowing club, so that's one of those things we're, you know, trying to work through. But overall, it's, it's, I feel very positive about it, kind of reviewing the report I put together for you, you fine folk, I feel good about where we are, I, you know, I'm, we're trying to meet these challenges and do the best we can. We have quite a few people here from both North Shore and, and the Rowing Club as well, some other representatives, and if there is time, I don't know the format of the, the meeting, but they may be able to address some details for you.
Your Honor, if, if it's okay with you, I would recommend that the school district come up and those who are getting us situated with the new rowing program, come up and talk to you more about that vision.
People with Pocock in it, yes, absolutely.
Yeah, we, as, as Paul mentioned, we've had, we have the superintendent, Michelle Reed here, Dr. Reed is here, also the athletic director for Inglemore High School is here, Lance Gatter, Deborah Schrebnack, who's on the KWAAC board, but also has been taking a key lead on all of this, and then Matt Lacy, who's the executive director of the George Pocock Rowing Foundation, they have several clubs in the Seattle area, and they're interested in helping us establish one here in the North Shore. So, if it's okay with you, I would invite those to come up, and while they're coming up, just go ahead and come up, you can sit right up, right up here at this table. I want to thank Paul Flynn for taking the presidency role on the board, I know it's kind of a thankless job and the, the pay isn't tremendous, in fact, isn't it right around zero? So, thank you so much for taking on that role, and you've done a great job. And, you briefly mentioned your daughter Isabella, and Isabella is a high-knee sprint canoeist, so I've seen her on the water, she's fast, and I know she's only going to get faster, and you're welcome to say something if you want, it's up to you.
I don't know.
Yeah, so, Isabella has been a great leader among the youth on the canoe and kayak racing team, and it's, and like her, like her dad said, she's been racing in various locations, including up near Maple Ridge, is it Maple Ridge?
Maple Ridge.
Yeah, Maple Ridge, Canada, and she did really well in that race, and so, keep it up.
Her paddling ability is far out there, anything she could say.
That's true, she doesn't need to say anything, because her paddling abilities speak for themselves, yes, and, and those of you who know what the, the sprint canoe is, you're up on one knee, and you're paddling on one side, and it's extremely rigorous and takes a ton of balance and a ton of skill, so.
And you tip over a lot when you're learning.
Yeah. So, with that, there's another great emerging hand-powered watercraft program that the school district is part, is partnering with us on, and they've got a, they've got an amazing announcement that they're going to tell you about, something having to do with the upcoming school year, and without stealing any more thunder, I will turn it over to this wonderful group.
Up is on.
Up is on, there we are. We're really excited to be here, my name's Lance Gatter, I'm the athletic director at Inglemore High School. A number of months ago, Dr. Reed looked at me and he said, Lance, guess what, we're starting crew, and I said, I'm your guy. So, here we are, and we're very fortunate that we're in the community where we've got the University of Washington, one of the nation's, maybe one of the world's best rowing programs for our kids to aspire to, so, at Inglemore High School, we're doing the same thing with 14 and 18-year-olds that you're doing with your business folks in the city of Kenmore, we're, we're trying to create a championship culture there, and so this is just another opportunity for us to hopefully reach out to a number of kids that maybe aren't football players, baseball players, or basketball players, and give them another opportunity for a college scholarship, and learn how to do some team building and, and build that championship attitude moving forward. So, I do have something for the group, if Mr. Carl Lindsey would help me hand them out, we made up some inaugural crew T-shirts here, and so, we're planning on starting this up, whether everyone's ready for us or not, we're starting in the fall, so, you can help.
While they're handing those out, I just want to add that the challenge I've given Lance and, of course, Matthew and Deborah is that the expectation is we're national champs in five years, so you heard it here first, it's another way to put Kenmore on the map.
Oh, I've heard it and I'm holding you to it.
I mean, you would, so, Your Honor, we're, we're really thrilled with the partnership of the city and thank you for your support, we hope to eventually have all four high schools rowing out of this area, and perhaps as Matthew's going to mention, you know, we have to create a boat house in the country, so, we're really excited and glad to start that journey with you here tonight, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, hello City Council, and hello Mr. Mayor, good to see you again, I'm Matt Lacy, the executive director for the Pocock Rowing Foundation, we believe that the sport of rowing can change lives, especially the lives of young people, and so we're dedicated to creating greater opportunities to row in the Northwest, and that's why the, I'm so excited of the idea of a boathouse in Kenmore, because here we are at the north end of the lake, and the closest opportunities to row will be found on the east side, about 12 to 15 miles away in Sammish, 20 miles north to Everett, or down in the city of Seattle, which of course, though you have one traffic awards, is still a bear to get down there, and so I believe is a barrier to a lot of the kids and citizens rowing here, and so the ability to engage the lake, you know, in a meaningful quality of life type of way is, is limited, so the idea of a boathouse up here, especially one where if we can meet the vision of four high school programs rowing, I mean, we're talking about three to 400 kids out on the water, and that is mind-blowing, as far as the opportunities that that can create to get into college and participate at the collegiate level, rowing was just announced for women, in particular, as the number-one opportunity to get a college scholarship, it's a two-to-one ratio, for every two athletes, there's one college scholarship out there waiting for collegiate seniors involved in the sport. So, the, the vision of this community to, you know, get the community out on the water and engage it, provide a lot of opportunities for youth, I think is going to put Kenmore on the map, I mean, this boathouse that could be a home for a number of public school programs is something that's very unique, you don't find that on the West Coast, and so, this idea of having a program here at the north end, I really believe is going to define the city of Kenmore as a place dedicated to enhancing the quality of life of its citizens and providing opportunities for its kids, and so, I'm so excited to be a part of this group, with Deb getting a lot of people on the water right now, and these folks over here from the school district, finding the future generations, if we can help pull the pieces together, we will. Of course, Rob Carl Lindsey has been a part of all of these conversations, and I just want to thank him for being involved and being patient also with our endless enthusiasm, but it's coming, so any case, I applaud your vision and thank you for your support, and I'm excited to see where this goes.
Yeah, and, and what's really great about the school district's involvement is that this sport can be available to kids across all economic levels at the high school level. Some think of rowing as kind of an elitist sport, where you've got to have a lot of money to be in rowing, but not so if it's offered at the high school, or through the, through the schools, which it's going to be, so, that's, that's just a wonderful aspect of this whole partnership that's coming together. And speaking, speaking of other pieces that are coming together, if we get a United States Army Corps permit, Corps of Engineers permit here in the next few weeks, Debbie, am I allowed to say this? If we get, if we get a Corps permit, which we think we're going to get pretty soon, then we can go out to bid on the Squires Landing dock, the Rodeo Dendron dock, and the Rodeo Dendron Park Boardwalk, which is an early win in our Walkways and Waterways bond measure, and if we can go out to bid by, say, the end of this month or early next month, then they can get going maybe midsummer and have two new docks and the Boardwalk completed by year's end, so, good job to Debbie and her team on that. And, one more, oh, is Ann, oh, Ann Stanton, you're in the back of Park Project Manager making all this happen, thank you, Ann, for being here. And then, one other piece of the puzzle is, this is no, this is not guaranteed, but Senator Frockt has been able to put $250,000 in for a boathouse in the Senate capital budget, it's not in the House version yet, but as you know, there, the two houses, the leadership in both houses are working out deals as I speak, or maybe not as I speak, but you know what I mean, and hopefully, that $250,000 will make it in the final capital budget adopted by the state legislature, and that'll be another really nice piece of the puzzle to help us get going and help us be able to have a good place to store boats, so.
And I, I just want to wrap up with this, with base, and almost everything has been said, except I just want to wrap up with a series of thank yous, and the first thank you going to the council for your continued support of getting people on the water, and in particular, your support of improvements to Rodeo Dendron Park and Squires Landing Park through the Waterways and Walkways Bond Measure, pushing for that, and supporting all of us to help make it happen. And I want to thank Matt Lacy, who has been a partner, as along with Rob, from the launch last year of our rowing program, helping us identify boats that we got for free, and helping locate, going out in the water with me to figure out where we could actually launch these, doing a beach launch, and then being at the right place at the right time when Dr. Reed came to our community and just took the whole thing by storm and said, we're going to start a rowing program in a public school, which is very rare, and as Rob said, it really speaks to allowing this sport to get into the community in a way that private schools, it's quite different than a private school program. So, we're just completely excited to be working with Dr. Reed and Lance, and this is a great opportunity, and I also, in case you don't already know, Allison Anderson, she is sitting here, and has joined the KWAAC board, and is moving into kind of running the rowing club program, particularly if things change for me in the fall. Thanks.
Just one thing, the Dragon Boat came four years ago?
They're in the beginning of 2014.
So, if you guys think back to 2014, not quite going on, on three years ago, this was an idea, this was an idea, we got a dragon boat here in, in Kenmore with five or six people from Kenmore going to China to race, we've got a young lady who is moving up in the ranks in canoes, we've got a high school rowing team starting up, I mean, look where we have come in such a short amount of time, look at the talent we have here in Kenmore, I mean, this is amazing, thank you guys, I mean, thank you, that's all I can say, amazing.
We'll be back soon with some more news.
Wonderful. Thank you, Dr. Reed, thank you very much. All right, next item on the agenda, Mr. Flynn, thank you so much for your leadership and direction on this. Communities for a United Reliable Energy, Cure.
Your Honor, if I can introduce this topic?
Please.
A couple of weeks ago, representatives of Puget Sound Energy came to your city council meeting, and they talked about the need for Energize Eastside, which is a regional electric reliability project that needs to happen in order to avoid power outages and power shortages across the region. Kenmore is one of many east-side cities that need this project to happen, if it doesn't happen, one possible outcome is that the region is subject to what they call rolling brownouts or rolling blackouts, and Kenmore could possibly be included in that. And, so, Puget Sound Energy gave their presentation a couple of weeks ago, there's a community advocacy, advocacy group called Communities United for Reliable Energy, and this group is promoting the Energize Eastside project, and tonight we have Sarah Langton, and she's going to introduce the person who's with her in just a minute, and you may recognize Sarah Langton, she helped with the 522 Transit Now project, which was very successful, but at the end of her presentation, I would like you to consider whether the city can put its support behind Cure's efforts. So, with that, Sarah, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor, I mean, thank you, Rob, and Mayor Baker, and Deputy Mayor Van Ness, and council members, it's great to be back in front of you. With me tonight, David Hoffman, with Master Builders, King County Manager, and David and I are going to be doing this presentation together, thank you so much for having us here tonight. As Rob mentioned at your April 24th meeting, you heard about Energize Eastside, which, as a reminder, is an economic infrastructure project that will upgrade the main backbone of the east side's transmission system. The last time that this, sorry, I have a little cold, so I may be doing a little of this, the last time that this particular transmission line was upgraded was in the 1960s, which is a long time ago, we all know that our east side communities have grown enormously since then and continue to grow, and I know in Kenmore, you're experiencing that as well, and we all know that our community's infrastructure, whether it's water, or sewer, or roads, or in this case, electrical infrastructure, has got to keep up with that growth and serve that growth as it continues. We also know that building any kind of infrastructure project in a built urban environment is not easy, and this project is no different, even though PSC has a existing utility corridor where this project is primarily being proposed to be built, and that corridor currently has poles and 115 KV wires, so there is that, there is that utility corridor, but nonetheless, it's a difficult project. At the April meeting, Mayor Baker mentioned that there is an opposition group to this project, for this project, and he's right about that, it is mostly a relatively small group of folks who either bought or built their house along that alignment, that alignment's actually been in place since the 1930s, last upgraded in the 1960s, and frankly, they don't want change, and it's totally understandable, their sole intent, their new paperwork that they're putting out in the community is to stop the project, they are now saying that out loud, which is a problem for all of us, they're allowed, they're motivated, they're somewhat relentless, and it became very obvious early on to folks in the east side communities that we needed to come together to do something, to help our council members who have to grant these permits, to help them understand that there is a larger community that does support this project. So, about a year and a half ago, a group of folks started meeting, and they came together to see what they could do to provide that positive, supportive voice of the vast majority of our east side folks, people in our communities who support reliable power, and included in this group were civic leaders, business folks, hospital folks, colleges, human service agencies, residents, all types of folks representing all parts of our community. After meeting for a few months, the group decided to form a grassroots coalition, that's what we're here tonight to talk about, they named it Cure, Communities United for Reliable Energy, its entire purpose is to be the supportive voice of the Energize Eastside, supportive voice for the Energize Eastside project, and to make sure we get it built, and built on time, so that our communities can continue to have reliable power and avoid the rolling blackouts that Rob mentioned. With that, I'll turn it over to David.
Thank you, Sarah, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of the council. As Sarah said, my name is David Hoffman, I serve as the co-spokesperson, excuse me, for the 19-member Cure Steering Committee, and I'm also the King County Manager with the Master Builders Association of King and Snohomish Counties. I served, in addition to serving on the Steering Committee for Cure, I served on Puget Sound Energy's Energize Eastside Community Advisory Group, which for 12- Energy's Energize Eastside Community Advisory Group, which, for 12 months, studied the need, alternatives, and route options available for the Energize Eastside project. So I have become very well acquainted with our region's power needs and transmission, transmission needs over the last few years. The Master Builders joined this group and stepped into a leadership role because we know that for our, our communities on the east side and beyond in this region, in order for them to continue to prosper and have a quality of life that we have, we need to focus our efforts on supporting key investments in our critical infrastructure projects. As a steering committee, CURE meets monthly, and our work is focused on engaging in a proactive, positive way to make sure the Energize Eastside project gets built and built on time. Our purpose statement reads, "CURE is a grassroots coalition of residents, civic leaders, businesses, schools, human service agencies, and healthcare providers. We know that for our region to continue to prosper, we must have electrical infrastructure that is built on time to avoid rolling blackouts using proven technologies, preferably on the existing utility corridor, to deliver dependable power to our community for years to come. We are here to provide the voice of the broader community in this topic so that our leaders are hearing from the entire community, not just a forceful minority. CURE's biggest concern is the prospect of PSC having to use rolling blackouts as a way to manage our aging electrical transmission system should this project not get built on time. This is clearly unacceptable for any of us. 2017 will be a very important year for CURE and for Energize Eastside. The Phase II Draft EIS was published and released today. Public meetings will be held over the next 45 days to gather community input on the findings in the Draft EIS. After that, many things will need to fall into place in order for this project to stay on track and on time. As we understand it, this infrastructure must be in place by the summer of 2018, which is coming up very quickly, only, what is that, 12, 13 months away? Or we face having to plan for rolling blackouts, not just on the east side, but beyond. In the year ahead, we will all hear voices trying to delay or stop this project, as Sarah has discussed. And those voices will be the most vocal and forceful to community leaders in your neighboring cities. Further delays are unacceptable. Stopping this project would be irresponsible. It has been over 50 years since this transmission system has been upgraded. We all know our community has grown and will continue to grow. We have outgrown our existing electrical transmission system, and we must address this in the year ahead as 2018 is looming. Thank you.
So CURE receives support and endorsements from a wide variety of organizations, businesses, individuals from across the east side, including in your backyard here, Bastier and UW-Bothel. And we've been out talking to groups of all kind. We've been talking to city councils. You're the first that are considering this topic as, to sign on. We continue to have new supporters every day. We had another company sign on today. You'll see those where we are to date listed on the flyer that was handed to you. It lists the Steering Committee, it lists our businesses and organizations to date, and on the back, our growing list of residents who are also signing on. We would welcome Kenmore to be the first city to sign on, if that's what you so choose to do, and we're happy to answer any questions. And mostly, thanks again for having us here tonight.
Questions? Councilmember Smith.
Hi, thanks for coming tonight, and I have a question. Because you mentioned the council's role in this, are the challenges, are they legislative issues or are they legal issues?
Well, what will happen is each city deals with a conditional use permit process differently, and that's what has to be granted in each of the five jurisdictions for this project to move forward. And so even though in every city it's different, some of them it's a quasi judicial process, some of them it's a legal process, you know, what's happening is they're just, you know, when they get barraged by negativity, it, the whole thing, it doesn't matter if it's political or not, or if it's quasi judicial or not, it just becomes more and more difficult. So we just want to make sure that, the polling that has been done shows that, you know, a vast majority of people are saying, yes, we need to move forward as difficult as it can be because of those loud voices that live along the corridor, frankly.
Okay, thank you. And then one kind of a follow-up thing. With the potential for the rolling blackouts in 2018, is, has there been any discussion about, at least until it's resolved, that there would not be new building permits or certificate of occupancy issued?
Yeah, I'll let you take that one.
At the risk of stepping outside of my bounds, you know, my understanding, and the Master Builders' understanding is, based on our conversations with PSC, PSC does not have the authority to declare moratorium on providing energy, and in fact, is due to federal law and state law required to provide electrical power to all new developments, multifamily, single family, et cetera. So.
Okay, thank you.
And again, the issue is, PSC has plenty of power, it's just the ability to get it to where it needs to be. That's the issue with this project.
Councilmember Sperry.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. So my first thought was, what color are the T-shirts?
Last time I was here, I had the T-shirts for me. Yeah.
Maybe it's just because we just got handed this really cool.
I know, those are cool.
Is it black? Like, it's going to be a blackout.
Yeah, I know. We thought about it, honestly. We're going to be more positive, though.
So my second question is, when you did raise the quasi judicial term, of course, that's something that we always take very seriously, and it really limits the ability of councils to speak on an issue. So I guess my first question is, is there anything that the city of Kenmore is going to have to permit if this project should move forward?
That answer is no.
Okay, so we don't, there's no possibility of that?
No.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Other questions?
Guys are so tame tonight.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, this is the corridor down through Bellevue and up the east side that we heard the presentation about from Puget.
Correct. Exact same one. It goes from Sammamish, which is sort of in the Willows area, the Sammamish Substation, down to Talbot Hill, which is in Renton, and so it's an 18-mile corridor straight through that part.
And the power that comes from that line will benefit us indirectly, getting the power up to the north.
Correct.
And when they presented that, I questioned them, it seemed like a pretty ambitious plan to get this up and running by the summer of 18. And they, they seemed to be very positive about it, that they, they were on track and they were going to do it. So let's, let's hope we can keep them going that way.
That's exactly right. That's what our role is, to help make sure that happens.
You betcha.
Correct. You're welcome.
Any other questions? Councilmember Smith.
Since nobody else has another question, I do have one. Can our city manager say, tell us if there's any, any reason we should not sign on? Is there some, something else, whether it's staff time or anything, that we're not aware of that we need to consider in that decision?
I can't think of any. I think one concern Councilmember Danuski raised very briefly last time was, you know, we don't want to get into the weeds, we want our support, if that's what you wish to do, to be pretty high level. We don't want to get into the specifics of exactly where the actual power lines can be going. We just, I think if you support it, you should, you should support it in a 30,000-foot level where you're saying, yes, this, this transmission line needs to be upgraded for the benefit of the region, and let the local cities work out the details on exact siding.
That's exactly right.
Thank you, because that's actually very much how I would look at it, too. I feel like we have a significantly, pretty high-level vested interest in making sure that we have no rolling blackouts. So I, in general, I'm in favor of a very high-level support for this, and I don't have a problem signing on.
Councilmember Curtis.
So if we do move to endorse CURE, will we also write a specific letter stating what you said, kind of what we're really supporting?
And once you, if you endorse CURE, then I will take that as whatever we can do without expending significant city resources to support CURE. So if it means writing a letter, we can do that. If it means putting our logo on their materials, that's, you know, it's those types of things that I would then do if you voted to support them tonight.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sperry.
Well, I certainly would be in favor of this. We've heard loud and clear from our citizens the impact of just, you know, temporary power outages, and that was very mobilizing events for our citizens. And I would imagine that, should the council sign on to this, that if they were made aware of this type of organization, that, that there may be some of those citizens who would be interested in that.
Excellent.
Is that a motion?
I can do that. We're ready. I move that we go ahead and endorse CURE.
I'll second that.
Yeah, all in favor of endorsing?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Great.
Thank you so much for your time. Really appreciate it.
We're the first, now what? Because I see a big list here.
You are the first city.
City.
First city.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is...
Citizen comments.
Citizen comments. In this opportunity to express your views on issues that are important to you and to the community, and we ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. And the clerk, please call the first person.
There is nobody signed up, Mayor.
Nobody signed up. Anybody wishing to be heard? Anybody wishing to be heard? Thank you all. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Now, moved and seconded? Deputy Mayor. And if there's no discussion, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda stands approved unanimously. Next item on the agenda, the Honorable Glenn Rogers is in the audience.
No.
Glenn, we're coming to you soon. The next item on the agenda, authorize city manager to execute contract number 17-C1689 Animal Services Interlocal Agreement 2018-2022 with King County. Mrs. Harris, Community Relations Manager, and Norm Alberg, Director of Records and Licensing, King County.
Yes.
Mrs. Harris, if you please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I'm just going to bring up the PowerPoint. While that's loading. So in March, City Council approved sending a non-binding statement of intent to participate in the Regional Animal Services of King County for the purpose of a cost and service analysis in drafting a proposed interlocal agreement. So I'm joined by Norm Alberg. He's the Director of Records and Licensing Services Division at King County, and he's going to provide an overview of the proposed interlocal agreement. The proposed agreement provides animal field services, licensing, and regional shelter services for five years, starting January 1st, 2018, through December 31st, 2022. Kelly? So Kenmore has, okay, thank you. Kenmore has received animal control services through an interlocal agreement with King County since incorporation. In 2010, after years of having separate agreements with various cities, the county executive decided to pursue a regional model for animal control services on the rationale of economy of scale and the ability to offer specialized cities to cities, services to cities. During that time, executive staff worked with representatives from the cities to develop a framework for an agreement and established an interlocal agreement in 2000, later in 2010. The contract was renewed in 2013, and it expires at the end of 2017. So once we get the PowerPoint up and going, Norm's going to provide an overview of RASK, the 2018 interlocal agreement, and changes compared to our current interlocal agreement, and then a timeline, and then provide an opportunity to answer any questions you may have. Let's see if we can get this going.
Just double-check my microphone. Is it on? There we go. I make a lot of presentations in technology. Yours looks very nice, but it's about a 50/50 whether Murphy pays you a visit or not. I could go ahead and start without the slides. I've got about 15 slides, take about five minutes or 10 minutes to cover them, and if there's questions during the presentation, please don't hesitate to ask, and we'll have time for questions at the end.
And then also, real quick, the presentation is in the Agenda Bill as well, so if you can't access the PowerPoint, the PowerPoint is within the Agenda packet.
All right. I'm going to go ahead and start. If you have a PowerPoint deck in front of you, I'm on page three, just a quick overview about the program. I feel tremendously fortunate to be affiliated with the program. It's one of my four lines of business. I was smart enough or lucky enough to hire a national leader to lead our program, Dr. Gene Mueller. He's been with us for going on five years, and you'll see meteoric improvement in our program about four or five years ago with the advent of him coming on the scene. We have a regional program that our executive is tremendously proud of. We're starting to get state, regional, and national attention for the successes of our program. As Leslie mentioned, we have our services organized into three primary areas. Field services, that's the trucks you see out responding to calls and helping with animals and, and people at risk. We have shelter services. We have a shelter down in Kent where we take in animals, provide animal care and support there. We also have a pet adoption center that Petco sponsored, which is quite a feather in our cap, that a private enterprise like Petco would partner with a public open shelter. They donated $100,000 of their money, gave us square footage in their store, and we do 25% of our adoptions out of that store, out of the partnership. And they just granted us a $75,000 grant for the work that we've accomplished with them. So we're quite proud of that. The third service is pet licensing. We provide marketing programs, canvassing support, mailings to keep your licensing up. As you'll see later in the presentation, you guys have done a fantastic job. I mean, 20 and 27% increases over the year to year, so that is great, which is, congratulations for you, taking it seriously. Your, your costs are covered because of your effort on licensing. Additionally, I think one of the benefits that people appreciate about having a regional program is we get 6,000 calls a year for service. A lot of them are nuisance calls, neighborhood issues, livability issues. We also get 300 public records requests, so we respond to those every year so the jurisdictions don't have to deal with those. And animal issues are very passionate issues. They are, involve people, and both, what I say inappropriately sometimes, the bieter and the bi-ti owners, they are, both have lots of issues and emotions involved. We deal with all of those things, as well as media coverage. Fortunately for us, we're getting much more positive media coverage, but it doesn't, it doesn't take much for a negative media story to consume a lot of resources. We also handle all the civil and any proceedings that go to Superior Court, cruelty investigations, those types of things. So I think I covered some of the benefits, a single point of contact for 24 cities and unincorporated one-stop shop. We have improved our use of our technology, locating and turning in lost pets using the electronic media that we have available. Like I said, we handle media inquiries. We partner with the sheriff and local police departments to work with them so they don't, their time and resources aren't on animal issues. And again, saving your attorney and your court system time is, is something we do. We do a lot of our adjudication through a Board of Appeals process. And I'm particularly proud of our partnerships with Dr. Mueller's leadership. We have multiple, multiple dozens of partners with for-profit and nonprofit organizations that help us with hard-to-place animals, et cetera. So we, we have quite an extensive network that we partner with. And speaking of partners, on page five of the deck, there's the list of the 24 cities. I guess I'll take a moment now to, I think you're all aware that City of Kirkland has provided notice they're going to start their own program. We're sorry to see them leave. They've been great partners. We'll work with them and help them be as successful as they can be. I do have a saying that's said frequently in the animal services industry, that anybody that wants to be in the animal services business has never been in the animal services business. So it is not for the faint of heart, and it is, it is hard to do, but like I said, I'm particularly proud of our program. proud of our program. Page six has a map of our district, as you can imagine, covering all of King County, from our friends up in the North End, Woodenville, all the way down to Kent and Maple Valley. We have quite a large service territory to cover. So we've developed over the years, dividing our districts into three and allocating our officers who report in district based on territory and roadway access. We get, like I said, we get a lot of calls a year. I think you've had an average of a hundred and twenty calls a year, is about what comes in from Kenmore. Two thousand and sixteen, our field response to your area, particularly in Kenmore, there were twenty, what we call NOVs, Notice of Violations issued. The vast majority are unlicensed dogs that we come out and respond and give the owners the encouragement to appropriately license their animals. Our shelter services, we take four thousand animals in a year at the shelter. We do a lot of placement in temporary homes, ill animals, special need animals. We have an amazing network of fosters that take them in, nurture them, often end up adopting them, as well as helping them get more adoptable for that. It's amazing to note that we get ninety-three thousand hours of volunteer time. That's over forty-five FTEs of free time we get from our volunteers, both in foster and care at the shelter. People love their animals, and they love being part of a successful program. I think that speaks to why we get such a high volume of volunteerism. We also get a lot of donations. We have an angel fund that people donate philanthropically to. We have employees that donate to that program, and that's for high-expense animal care that doesn't get charged to the program, whether it's surgery or medical. Particularly, if you look at page nine, the history of euthanasia at the shelter is something we're particularly proud of. We have quite an ugly past back in the early two thousands, where one out of two animals was euthanized at our shelter. We're on the verge of being a no-kill shelter, which is defined that no animal can be placed except for temperament and severe illness is euthanized. We're at eleven percent right now. Ten percent is the national standard for an open shelter to be called a no-kill. We're gonna get there. It's gonna be, it's gonna be quite amazing, and you'll be reading more positive things about us in the press. Licensing, we have a unified system that keeps track of licensing, sends out notice, our canvassers, that you guys, and thanks to your participation, have gone out, and quite frankly, that makes the difference. There is a wee bit of controversy of canvassing. People like their privacy, and we have trained professionals, and we try and be as respectful as possible, but I think I can say confidently, the reason you've had twenty and twenty-seven percent increase in the last two years is because the last two years, you've done canvassing. So thank you for doing that, because it helps the whole program, it helps you cover your costs. Like I said, so your revenues have gone up sixteen thousand dollars each year, two years in a row, that you've done canvassing. I'm on page eleven to show the bar chart increase of your sales of pet licensing. Pet licensing, a very interesting thing. A high rate on a national average is twenty percent of pet owners actually licensed their pets. And so there's an eighty percent population out there, but twenty percent is pretty good. You guys are, I think, in closer to the twenty-five and twenty-eight percent in your jurisdiction, so that's on the higher end of things. It does seem like there's lots of opportunity to maintain that and increase it, but people come and go. There's about a six percent attrition rate each year, free people leaving, or their animals passing on. So just to stay even, you have to add six percent a year, let alone add to that growth. So it is a constant challenge. The contract, I'll draw your attention to some of the high-level changes in the last couple of slides. On page twelve, we've, over the years, developed a pretty balanced mechanism for our cost allocation. We used to be at fifty percent, fifty percent for usage and fifty percent for population. That really wasn't fair to the North End and East Side, lower-use populations, so we've morphed over the last few years into the eighty percent based on usage, direct charge, and twenty percent, what I think of as an availability, like a fire department, based on your population. You're going to, you may or may not have a need each quarter, each year, and that's what the twenty percent covers. There's been a slight change that, there was some volatility year to year in jurisdictions, so people like to be able to program their budgets with a little bit more predictability. So the wisdom of the group was to look at a three-year rolling average to take any spikes and valleys out. It gives a lot more predictability. So that was a new change for this year. Going to a five-year contract is a big commitment, we recognize that. We also, with our partners, we recognize it takes eighteen months to negotiate a three-year contract, so you've got about eighteen months without being in negotiations. So things are going well for us. We have stability, we have success, and tried and true practices on our side, so I think people are very comfortable going to a five-year. And if things go as I hope they will, we'll have a renewal in five years, an automatic extension is another item that's in there. Anybody can opt out at the, in the fourth year and give us notification. As you can appreciate, the interdependency, as you can note from Kirkland's departure, affects everybody else, so advanced notice of somebody departing the system that affects everybody else would call a renegotiation at the end of the initial term. We do have a provision for latecomers to come in. There's been, Bureans expressed some interest, but as of now, they're not in the model. We can have latecomers come in without having to open negotiations, again, as long as it doesn't affect service and doesn't affect costs. So if they come in and we need to hire an animal control officer, they're gonna have to cover the cost of an animal control officer, that type of thing. On page thirteen, that covers the latecomers. Shelter credits is something that the county executive has committed to help out the high-use, lower-income, in the South End. There is large, high usage, which makes their cost of service about triple what it is in other areas, so we've developed formulas to help mitigate the South End cities that have high usage and low income to make their costs more equitable, similar to what the other more affluent areas are. So we're keeping that in. That is something, as you can imagine, the contributions that the county makes to the model is something that I'll be at a table very similar to this, downtown, talking to the county council, getting their approval to endorse the contract. And so they want to make sure we're being prudent with our investments also. So as far as the county's contribution, that shows on page fourteen, for a biennial, we're in for almost five-point-three million is what it costs the county. About eight-hundred thousand all year, or one-point-six for the two-year, is us as a customer, because unincorporated citizens and residents have animals, and we're a customer and user of the system, so we're one of the bigger users. There is two-thirds of what contributes, we bring to the table and put into two pieces. It's things that have to be paid for to have a model program, a foster coordinator to get all those things to happen that I talked about earlier, extra vet care that we don't think is fair or a city would be willing to pay, that, as well as some other things that make the model a model program. So we're not charging the cities for that, that comes out of the county's general fund. The other piece that the county puts into it that comes out of the county's general fund is those transition credits or the support credits for the low-income, South End cities. So that's what I'll be explaining to our county council. This is very stable, it's what it's been for the last five years, the same ratio. I think I might have skipped over one significant change that we felt we had to make, that I don't believe it affects, I don't think it affects you guys, that if a city has more positive revenue than their costs, it used to flow back proportionally to all the cities. We felt we needed to make a change for jurisdictions that had higher costs that weren't using it for their own animal services, and you can buy additional services if you have that, it flows to offset those model costs. So if somebody's reaping a benefit of the program over and above their expense, we thought that would help signal to our council that we're making changes, trying to do right by the county's general fund, because as you can see, we're, the county is contributing quite a bit of money for this model program. In the grander scheme of things, we're talking ten or twenty thousand dollars a year potentially, as opposed to the five-point-two million dollars that we're talking about. So on page fifteen, it's probably the slide you might be most interested in, it's all about Kenmore. It shows how the costs are calculated for your city. So your twenty-eighty ratio on your field service is about forty-eight thousand, estimated for two thousand and eighteen. Your shelter, you're only charged a twenty percent because of your population and no usage because you shelter at pause. I guess I would note that while you do shelter at pause, we still take a dozen or so non-pause animals of Kenmore's each year. They will not take feral cats or vicious dogs or some of the more exotics. So they take ninety percent of your animals, but because that's part of what your twenty percent you can see is paying for is availability of shelter of animals that pause will not take. Licensing, your twenty-eighty on there comes out to about nineteen thousand dollars, so all in for the services that you're charged is about eighty thousand. And then you have about a four- or five-thousand-dollar pause cost, so for eighty-five thousand dollars-ish roughly, but you're selling nine, almost ninety-one thousand dollars worth of licenses. So you have potentially five thousand dollars on the table to buy additional services, invest in other things, or that would remit back to the county and go to offset some of the model costs. Quickly, on the timeline?
Okay, I believe you said we could ask during the, I have a question on that. Because it looks like we're one of very few cities that have that surplus. What services, since it's basically a service or a surplus that's lost if we don't use it, it sounds like, lost to the benefit of our citizens, what are the services that we could gain that we're not getting?
You could buy extra hours of animal control officers and park patrols, presence at community events, those types of things, additional marketing support from us.
We've utilized some of that as well for canvassing efforts, where we've seen the increase in the revenue side.
So if we do, but if we canvass more, that means we would continue to generate probably higher than typical, we'd have even a bigger surplus. I'm not saying we shouldn't, I'm just trying to figure out how can we utilize that to keep it in our community?
The biggest use that we've had historically has been additional officer hours. Weekends, parks, community events, visibility of officers does great things, both for licensing as well as leash laws.
Okay, thank you.
The last page of the presentation is a timeline. We started meeting early last year and came up with this timeline, just to give people certainty. September was the agreement in principle, you may remember that, going through, getting non-binding agreements from all twenty-four of the cities to create that certainty that we could actually run a final cost sheet that we just walked you through, so people would know what they're signing up for. That was in December. January, we were obligated to give you that, page fifteen, all twenty-four of the cities, so they could see what their forecast for the future was. We needed final notice from all cities, so we could go to our council to say twenty-four cities have signed up. When their council approves it, here's their costs and here's the county costs, and that's the discussions I'll be having over the next few weeks with my county council. And by June first, having all the cities approve their contract, so the council can approve the contract, so that you guys can get final signatures, and I can get Dow signatures on the contract, so that's the timeline that we're on. So we're coming down, we're close, we're a month or so away. So that's the, that's what I had to share. I'm glad to answer any questions, if there's anything else I can do to help. You guys have been great partners. Councilmember Curtis?
I don't know if this is in or out of your purview, but have a question on dog parks. So I think we might have an unofficial dog park at Swamp Creek, but supposing that we want to do an official dog park, do you give advice on that sort of thing?
Partner with all kinds of city parks departments, whether they have an off-leash area, they just want a presence there to give out gentle reminders that there are leash laws and scoop laws, those types of things. We've got some great signage that we've had put up in parks, just to remind people about being a good neighbor and citizen, so we actively partner. If there's somebody in your parks department you'd like us to contact, I'd be glad to.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Sperry?
Yeah, I wanted to follow up on Councilmember Smith's question about the funds that are generated in excess of the services. And Leslie, you had mentioned that somehow we were using those for canvassing. Can you talk about that?
Yeah, so part of it's additional marketing support, and so that's, in that is also the opportunity to have them canvass or go out and do educational, educate people on why pet licensing is important. So that's part of the fund. So over the past couple of years, two years ago, they canvassed in South Kenmore. Last year, they canvassed in North Kenmore, and currently, they're canvassing in visiting apartments, and then also the Arrowhead community. So that's just handing out information about pet licensing and why it's important to do that, if they have a pet. But we have also used it for park signage as well, to put up pamphlets and brochures and just pet information, animal information.
All right, any other questions? So the chair will entertain a motion to authorize city manager execute contract number seventeen dash C one six eight nine, animal services interlocal agreement in two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and twenty-two with King County. Is there a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Pick your pick.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing, oh, Councilmember Smith.
I'm absolutely in favor of this, but it would seem logical that we try to maximize our benefit, and if we have excess funds, then I would like us to continue to do what we can to just utilize those so that they don't go into the general pool.
Sure. I can work with King County to identify what that cost may be, and then how we can use that.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
But that excess fund is based on an estimated revenue.
Correct.
And should we spend that estimated surplus, and the revenue doesn't turn out to be as high as we thought it was gonna be, then we owe you money. Is that right? Or are we spending this surplus in the following year?
There's at least a six-month or a twelve-month delay, so we do an estimate, and then you make a payment, and then we see actuals, and there's a true-up. So there's a constant flow of estimate and truing up, so it is on a, essentially, a six-month cycle of estimate, and then another, the next six months, you do an actual, and then the cycle starts again.
And if we're putting this money into canvassing, it should result in more licenses, and so the revenue should continue to grow.
And again, not on commission basis for canvassing, but it actually pays more than two to one the year that you do it, and then you get the residual of those licenses you capture for the next three years also, so it's about the best investment you can make for dollar for dollar. All right. Any further questions, comments? Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sperry?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Venice?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Great, thank you for your partnership, it's been great, very much.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you, Mrs. Harris. Been a long time coming, Glenn.
Long time.
Councilmember Rogers was very active when we were at a meeting, oh, I think it was in Denver, wasn't it, in Denver, a number of years ago, wherever we were? And we saw this program, and I know that Glenn really wanted to bring this to Kenmore, and I know he's been asking about it for years. So, next item on the agenda is authorize the city manager execute marketing agreement, contract seventeen dash C one six eight zero with Utility Service Partners, Private Label Inc., DBA Service Line Warranties of America, and provide direction on use of the fifty-cent royalty payments. City manager.
Thank you, your honor. Joanne Gregory, our finance director, has had the lead on this and has done a lot of great work getting this to where it is tonight. But because we canceled the May fifteenth meeting, and because we wanted to get this done sooner rather than later, and she couldn't be here tonight, we decided to go ahead and move forward tonight, and I would do my best at trying to represent her and trying to present this item, because we want to be the first city in Washington to have this. That's kind of a theme tonight, isn't it? But anyway, as you all know, water lines break, sewer lines break, and unfortunately, a lot of property owners think that if their water main or sewer line breaks, they either think it's the city's responsibility, or the utility provider's responsibility, or they think it's covered by their homeowner's policy, which is most often not the case. And then they get this big thousands-of-dollar bill to have to, that they have to pay themselves to repair these lines. And so there's an insurance program. It's kind of like Aflac, but Aflac for your And so there's an insurance program, it's kind of like Aflac, but Aflac for your water main and sewer main. And, and as the mayor mentioned, former councilmember Glenn Rogers and the mayor both discovered the possibility of offering this type of coverage to our very own citizens because of their involvement with the National League of Cities. And so they asked us to look into it, and we looked into implementing it, but we found out that because of rules in Washington State, we couldn't implement this type of insurance coverage, which helps people pay for their water and sewer main breaks right away, and that we needed Washington State to get its act together before we could implement it here. So Joanne worked with the folks at the state, and it took them a while, but after several years, they were able to get their ducks in a row and make it possible for insurance policies like this to be offered in our state. And so as it says in your council bill, utility service providers, which has been vetted and endorsed by the National League of Cities, would be the service provider that provide this policy and make it available to our citizens. What's our role in this? There's no cost to the city, but we would allow them to use our name and our logo in their marketing materials. And if you actually want to go to the contract itself, page one of the contract, you'll see our responsibility right there, and paragraph two, grant of license, you'll see what our responsibility is there. So they would be able to use our logo on their letterhead bills and marketing materials to send to the residential property owners. That would be our role. Things like coverage limits and the quality of the insurance and things like that are further down in your packet. There's a pretty informative PowerPoint presentation kind of midway down, if you scroll down, talks about the coverage limits. The coverage limits are different for water and sewer lines that break inside your home versus the ones that break outside your home. Outside your home, they have a little bit higher coverage for you. They also have additional coverage in case you actually have to dig into the road and things like that, so. I want to thank councilmember Glenn Rogers for his perseverance through all this and his patience. It's because of him and Mayor Baker that we're here tonight, and we're going to be able to offer this to our citizens. And like I said, if you approve it, we'll be the first in the state to do so. Oh, thank you, yes. As it also says in your council bill, we need your direction on the fifty cent royalty. So of the premium, there's fifty cents that could go to the city and that we could get and just put into the city's general fund. Or you can elect not to accept that fifty cents, and that would just result in fifty cent savings to the residential homeowners who pay the premium. My recommendation, just for ease, is to let the homeowners have that savings. I'd rather not have to deal with accounting and all that. And I really don't have an idea of how many homeowners are going to sign up and things like that. But given that there's really not much of a cost to us and not much of a cost for us to administer this contract, I'd recommend that you just let the homeowners have that savings.
So I think, Council, Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, and all of us who have been going to National League of Cities meetings over the years have, have been interested in this, this plan. It's a plan that's endorsed by the National League of Cities as a viable, good program, and it's something that most homeowners don't have through their regular homeowners insurance. And if your line fails, especially your water line, under pressure, is more likely to fail than a sewer line, I would think. But if it fails under pressure, you've got one heck of a job digging it up and depending on where your water meter is versus where your house is. And so this has been something that Glenn and, and Mayor Baker and myself and, and Councilmember Curtis and Herbig, I think we've all been interested in this over the years. And James Hunt, who is past president of the National League of Cities, is actually involved with, with this program as well. And it's, it's a, it's a good program, and I think we should put our, our efforts behind it, publicize it, because I think it is something of real value to the citizens of Kenmore, so.
I, I think that, most people don't think about it, but I know one of our neighbors had a water line break. And I think NUD charged him something like thirty thousand dollars to replace it because it went under a house. You know, and this is something that was built years ago. And this, this covers, totally voluntary, homeowners can get it or not, but it covers the water line from the street connection to, to, to your house, I believe. And the same with the sewer. It, it, it just eliminates some expenses, voluntary, it's a very small monthly premium, but it's totally up to whoever, if they want it or not, so. But it's, the Department of Water Power, I think, has had one that they have been, I've seen it coming, coming in the mail every now and then, but this is one that we know who the company is, we know the background, they've been pretty well vetted by National League of Cities, so, anyway. Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, I appreciate you mentioning about the cost, because it's something I deal with in my work a lot, and I can tell you that, I think this looks really good, I think one of the really, there is a downside here that's not, you really have to be aware of it, and that's the maximum coverage amount, because it's really low. And I personally have paid fifteen thousand five years ago for a sewer repair line at my house, and they have, their incident repair coverage is maxed out at around like four thousand and three thousand dollars.
And I asked that very question.
And so that's a...
And because they have contracts with the, the different plumbers in the area?
Yeah.
That they get work for that price, because they do contracting on, on a large scale with them, so they're able to get that price. But anyway, that, it, it says what it says.
Yep. Also note that they have an additional allowance if, for, if you have to access a public street or a public sidewalk. So there's, there's more if, beyond the four thousand, if they have to get into the street.
Councilmember Curtis?
My understanding is you can get one without the other, so you can get the water without the sewer.
You can mix and match, do whatever. Sperry?
So I think everybody has a story here. So mine was four thousand for, but the, we just found out a couple of months back that we weren't supposed to have as good of water pressure as we did. They didn't put the, the reducing valve on it, and so our water pressure for years now has been twice what it should be. So one of the things I would hope is that with, with a program like this, that you have the vetted contractors, because, you know, when you go out in your yard and your water's bubbling up through the yard, there's not a lot of time to, you know, research a bunch of things. So I would hope, you know, that if, that the contract, especially since we're new in Washington State, that the people that they have are well-vetted and that the work, the quality is there. From what I read, it sounds like there's been like zero complaints and all that's done, so that's another aspect of this beyond the money, of making sure the jobs done right, so.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yeah, I'm in favor of this and to give the fifty cents back to the citizen.
Yeah. All right. So if, if there's no more comments, then I guess you need two, one stating what to do and one whether to edit the agreement? No?
You know, if you want to do it all in one motion, that's fine.
Okay. The attorney is nodding her head also. Yes. So then the chair to entertain a motion to authorize the city manager to enter into this marketing agreement, contract number seventeen dash C one six eighty, with the service line warranties of America and per, and to... Fifty cents goes back to the customer.
That's right.
So, is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All right. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sperry?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Venice?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Councilmember Rogers, we appreciate your presence here. All right, next item on the agenda, land use streamlining project. Ms. Spence and Mrs. Anderson?
Good evening, Council. We're here for land use streamlining part two, because we know that part one was just so much fun, so this is the sequel. So again, the goal of this project is to streamline, make the rules simpler, easier to interpret, reduce the amount of definitions and so forth. And at the last meeting, Laurie stepped through some of the policy questions that had come up, and kind of went through the process using a couple of examples. We don't plan on doing that again this evening, you'll be probably relieved to know that. So what we're really looking for tonight is feedback, especially on the policy questions that were identified in your packet. And other than that, some general questions. If we can address all that information tonight, then we're tentatively looking at a public hearing, an ordinance adoption in early June. So I'm going to now turn it over to Laurie. Thank you.
Good evening. Actually, I don't really have anything to add. I'm here to answer questions. Again, as Debbie pointed out, probably the, what may be the area of most interest to the council is the first attachment to your packet, which sort of outlines some of the policy recommendations that staff is making. Again, the effort was not to make any changes to the policy intent of the zoning code, but merely to use consistent terminology, and then where issues arose, to try to make some minor policy recommendations, to be able to use that same terminology throughout the zoning districts and the other sections of the code. So with that, really, I'm, I'm here to answer questions, or if you need a description of how a change was recommended, I'm happy to do that.
I, I've got a couple of real, just clarification issues on attachment three.
Attachment three, okay, so attachment three is the existing code sections? So is that the one that you were...
Yeah, I just, I just want some clarifications on, any of this stuff is carrying over.
Right, so attachment three, those are the existing charts. And what we did was to go through those charts and take the land uses, some of which were very specific, and then try to convert those terms into this new standardized list of land use terms. And we brought forward with those changes, the footnotes were applicable, or we rewrote the footnotes to make sense, given their new context. But again, the goal was not to make wholesale policy changes, but just to reuse that new terminology.
I, I guess there's a couple of things that, that just stood out. And one was the, this classification that we had for R one through R six was dealing with organizational, organizational lodging and housing.
Right.
So in other words, that like, be like an Airbnb coming in and buying up a bunch of houses and using them.
So...
So we are continuing not allowing that, right?
So organization lodging house would fall into the new term temporary lodging, and that's a defined term, and then hopefully it found its way to the same place in the chart as it was previously. I don't think any of these city rules really address Airbnbs, we don't currently, and the new rules haven't changed that position. So it's, so no, it's a temporary, that term, which came forward from King County in nineteen ninety-eight, I'm sure did not envision Airbnb.
Fine. Then there was, there was another one that, that cropped up, and I think this one, there's that one, and this one. So I know another one that I saw in there, and I want to see if it carried over or not, was again in the same R one through R six, and has to do with transportation, individual transportation and taxi is a non-permitted use.
So...
Because I know there's a number of individual households in these zones in Kenmore that do provide that service.
Right. Again, this is an old terminology. It would fall, individual transportation and taxi would fall under the new term transportation. And, and so you, you've hit, you've sort of hit on the very issue here with this, these land use terms, because historically, I'm not sure we knew what those terms meant. What is individual transportation and taxi? Well, we know what taxi is, but what is individual transportation? What we've done with the new terms is we've chosen a word based on a standard national classification system for businesses or uses, and then we've taken that new term, we've cross-referenced it to the national terminology, that's that NAICS or NAICS terminology, to help people interpret what we mean. We're trying to make it easier. An organization hotel lodging house is a very good example. I don't know what that is. I, I truly, I, I assume it's temporary lodging of some sort, but I don't know what it is.
See, and I just assumed it was somebody buying up a bunch of houses and using them as Airbnbs, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, or a bunch of condos, which I, anyway, neither here nor there. Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, Councilmember Danuski?
Just have a random curiosity question of why mobile food service would be not permitted in downtown residential? Would that mean like Spencer sixty-eight couldn't have a food truck come?
It, it would mean that it could not. And so again, at, at, at some point, we had to make a call about whether we thought that was appropriate or not, and because it was a residential zone, downtown residential, it's currently not a term in that zone, and so it was unassigned and we decided to make it a prohibited use, but that is a policy call. And so if the council felt that in downtown residential, that that was appropriate to have a food truck, again, you could make a different decision. We felt that in, since that's predominantly a residential zone, we probably wouldn't allow it.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Curtis?
So it sounds like this, this new approach will standardize terminology, but some of the terminology might be old and outdated. Do you have any recommendation on whether we should address Airbnb or Uber or those sorts of newer technologies?
I think that that is something that the council may want to look at. I think it is a very complex and controversial project, and I certainly don't think it would fall into the vein of this streamlining project. If the council wanted to take up those, those topics, and again, Uber probably not so much through the land use code as Airbnb, then I would suggest that that be something that the council would consider for the docket. And in fact, there was one on the housing, the housing strategy plan, one of the strategy plan, one of the strategies that was included in that was to look at things like temporary lodging, like Airbnb and that kind of thing. It didn't rise to the top, but those can always be reprioritized at the time of the docket.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right. Then this was, again, we want to see if you're on the right track.
Correct. And if, if you don't have further questions, then what we would do would be to move ahead and schedule a public hearing, and then presumably would have the ordinance available that evening if you were ready to adopt it.
All right. Are we ready to continue to move forward with this? Are we ready to continue to move forward with this? Seeing a bunch of nods here, so we think you're on the right track.
Great, thank you.
And I do have another couple of questions, but if we, we can do it offline. This is not anything that's
Okay.
Needs council time, so thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda then is resolution number 17 dash 295 regarding public agency utility exemption to the city's critical area regulations. Ms. Spence?
Thank you. So you recall that last year, the council adopted an ordinance which had amendments to the public agency utility exception regulations? That ordinance was appealed to the growth management hearing board. The growth management hearing board decision remanded that back to the council and requiring action. So the resolution before you this evening is that action to comply with the growth board's direction. So if the resolution is adopted this evening and the resolution is basically would take the regulations back to the previous regulations before the ordinance adoption. So it's taking it back to the old regulations. Once the resolution is adopted, there are some procedural things that we have to do with the growth board that our city attorney will help us take care of, get the right paperwork in place. And I believe then the growth board has scheduled a July hearing on our action. So the recommendation from staff is that you adopt the resolution this evening. And we're here to answer any questions, as is the city attorney.
Any questions? Councilmember Herbig? No. Sorry. Councilmember Curtis?
I think, I don't, I can't find it right now, but I think the important part is, this is the short-term fix. It's part of a bigger plan to come back and redress it and look at it later.
We have that option. We felt that it was a better option to look at best available science in a holistic way when we looked at the critical area regulations. Whether we decide to further amend public agency utility exceptions, we can make that decision at that point.
Thank you.
Any further questions? All right. So the chair will entertain a motion to approve resolution number 17 dash 295 regarding the public agency utility exemption.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any further comments, discussions? Herring, clerk, please take the roll.
Deputy Mayor Vannas?
Yes.
Councilmember Sperry?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbig?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Staff report.
Debbie and Laura, if you could stay up here for one quick thing. So Affordable Housing Week is next week, and there's going to be lots of activities to recognize that throughout the region. We've decided to host our own. So a week from tonight, there's no city council meeting. And instead, we're going to have an affordable housing forum with a panel. And can you remind me who the panelists are, please?
Yes. I can. So we have three panelists. And then Arthur Sullivan with Arch is going to be the moderator. Three, amazing.
I can come up with a PowerPoint for you if you want.
The three panelists are Beth Borum. She is with Beacon Development, which is, works with nonprofits to develop affordable housing. And then Eric Campbell with Main Street. It'll be a familiar name to you. He's going to talk about including affordable housing in private development. And he'll talk about Spencer 68 some, but also a project that called Greenbrier in Redmond is one he'll talk about. And the third man's name is Dan. And to be perfectly honest, I can't remember his last name.
That's okay.
Pardon?
Watson?
Oh. Leslie, yes, Daniel Watson. And he is from King County Housing Authority. And he is going to be speaking about preserving existing affordable housing. So some of the efforts they have made to purchase currently privately-owned properties and then manage them for workforce or lower-income housing.
So we've invited not just people from the city, but we've invited our neighboring cities and
Correct.
Other housing advocacy groups and things like that. So hopefully we'll get a good turnout. It starts seven o'clock next Monday, right?
Right. And the one other thing that I would like to mention is that we are actually co-sponsoring this event with a group called the Kenmore Bothell Interface Group, KBIG. And I met, along with Arthur and Debbie, we met with their representative and Kristen Joyner. And they're super excited. They've been focused fairly intently on homeless housing, and they've had a number of presentations. But they wanted to branch out and hear about some success stories, not necessarily related to homeless housing. And so they were wanting to do something during Affordable Housing Week. And Arthur Sullivan knew that we were doing this. And so KBIG asked if they too could join in. So we're excited to have them. And they have been really marketing this to all of their communities. It's a, it's a broad group representing a number of different faith groups, so.
Good, I'm glad they're involved.
Okay, thank you for that.
We, I don't know if there are any council members who are planning to attend that event on Monday, but if so, we would like, if it's the mayor or the deputy mayor or a council member, to sort of provide some brief welcoming remarks at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay.
I'll be there. Sure.
No, I won't be there, but I actually have a question. So I won't be there because I'm at my son's honor society induction, but I was curious if it was going to be recorded or not?
We're hoping to record it, yeah.
Thanks.
All right.
So did we have a person?
Will you be there, Mayor?
No, I'm, I will not.
Alan? Okay. So deputy mayor then will introduce you and you could give a couple of welcoming remarks. I'm happy to help with that if you need anything on that.
Can you give me a few talking points?
Yep.
Okay, I got a couple more items, Your Honor.
Mary's Place?
Nancy, would you be willing to talk a little bit about, give an update on Mary's Place? And while Nancy's coming up, Mayor, will you be willing to talk about what happened last Friday afternoon and also what happened this morning at the
As much as I can remember.
Economic.
Definitely.
Okay, I'm happy to jump in, but I don't want to. Okay, when we come to your remarks, you can go for it and I'll be happy to supplement.
Good evening. Give me an update on what's going on with, with Mary's Place. They'd have a very good discussion with the Kenmore Business Alliance last, last Thursday. And there were a lot of good questions from, from the group, but also a lot of enthusiasm about, about the work that Mary's Place does. They are also meeting with nearby neighbors, arranging meetings or tours of their North Seattle facility. And so I'm going to be joining them tomorrow evening at the Sequoias. And the manager of the Sequoias has already toured the North Seattle facility. And, and an email I saw just indicated that they're very impressed with, with the work that's being done there. It looks like the community information meeting will be in June instead of May. They want to make sure that they can schedule those smaller meetings first. And so they're, they're working with the Montessori School and, and other nearby neighbors to do that. So look for an announcement about the, the June meeting date pretty soon. They hope to be operational. The permits, I think, are moving along pretty well. And then they have some work to do. I think a kind of a general timeline for them to be operational is somewhere a six-to-eight-week range. So I was wondering if, if the council would want to have a briefing from them somewhere in this general timeframe, right before or right after the, the community information meeting? Does that sound like something you'd, you'd like to do? Okay.
They're a really, really good organization. It'd be great to have them here.
So, so are you talking about a separate meeting other than the community meeting?
Or just at one of your council meetings?
Oh. Well, either way is fine. I mean, if they wanted to come and brief, I see what you're saying though, I get it, yeah. Because it seems like, why have an extra meeting, you know? But I guess if we're, we have, I can see where we couldn't just, we could do it as a special meeting and have our briefing. And then they could have a community meeting or something like that. That might be an option.
Well, let's, yeah, let's see what we can put together. Be good. Any other questions?
Yeah, wonderful.
That's all I have.
All right. Councilmember reports, comments, issues. Councilmember Smith?
Nothing this evening.
Councilmember Sperry?
It was a great meeting. I had fun.
Councilmember Curtis?
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Herbig?
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Danuski?
Nothing to add.
Deputy Mayor?
I have nothing tonight, thanks.
So I just got a couple of quick things. Friday, we went to a transportation east side meeting that Councilmember Balducci chaired. And this was basically to sort of let us know the hornet's nest that's coming, the, the mess, the Armageddon that's coming with One Center City in Seattle and all of the projects that are going around on the east side. There is going to be a big construction project at the convention center. They are going to do a cut and cover new tunnel downtown. There is a number of projects on the east side. Bus transportation from the east side to downtown is going to be severely limited, well, not limited, it's just in, what used to be one bus ride will now be two and three bus rides to get where you want to go. It, along the 520 corridor, 522 corridor, we may not think we're going to see much, but we will. Chances are that we will go, instead of directly downtown, there is the chance that we will go to the light rail station, the light rail station downtown, and then maybe another bus somewhere else. There's a lot of possibilities here, a lot of things left to be worked out. But this is all just sort of coming. And I believe it's starting next year and will continue for about four or five years.
That's right, yeah.
And am I missing anything here?
No, and so there were quite a few people, east side city officials, elected officials, staff, people from WashDOT and other agencies there. And they, they were all grouped in different tables. And we all brainstormed concerns as well as solutions. And I think each table came up with some, some good ideas and solutions that they're going to summarize and, and put into a report. But I think it was good for Councilmember Claudia Balducci to see this coming and, and being willing to convene a meeting like this to bring it all to our attention and, and get it on everybody's radar.
I know that there has been this talk of this One Center City going around, but I don't think there's been too many communities on the east side really paying attention to what's going on. And it was really good to have this group of people there to really hear what, what actually is going to be happening. And all of us talk about our projects. So, yeah, I think it was, I think it was very informing. And I was glad to see that the number of people that turned out, turned out. So I'm very pleased about that. Today, there was an economic conference. This was a repeat of one that we did a couple of years ago, only instead of being Seattle, King County, this, this time we included Pierce County, Kitsap County, and Snohomish County in with King County and Seattle. And I was one of the ones making opening remarks today. And there was a number of different speakers, but there was also a panel, which our, our deputy city administrator took part of, Nancy Ozzie. We really appreciated her there. I think because of my leg, I had left before you got on, but
I was looking for you guys.
Yeah, but I, I certainly appreciate that you were being there, talking about Kenmore and what we've done. So anything you want to add as to the event? I think it was pretty well-attended. There was a lot of people there from, that I hadn't seen before, that were not really part of the King County group that you sort of get to know from a lot of different meetings. There was a lot of people from other counties there at this time.
When I arrived at 11-ish, the county executives from, from the counties were, were on a panel. And so it was, you know, very high-level discussions and, you know, very well-attended. And the panel that I was on was like six, I think there were six of us. And we were charged with telling economic development success stories in five minutes. We get five slides, five minutes. You know, that's a challenge. But it went very well. And, and Mayor Stokes of Bellevue was, was one of the people presenting. And there were several examples of, of cities or counties who had recruited companies into, into their, their communities. And so our presentation was, I was asked to present on partnering with the small business community. But I kind of stretched the limit on that so I could talk about what I call the redevelopment trifecta in Kenmore, which is downtown, St. Edward Seminary, and Lake Point. So I was, I managed to squeeze in some mention of that. So it was, it was a really good, really good day. And they also talked a lot about workforce. And the final panel was workforce organizations and, and the challenge of really, you know, having trained workers that, that will be available to, you know, fill the needs of companies that are coming online. So it was good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
It was on the Microsoft campus. It was in one of their, one of their conference centers. And so, like I said, it was a good talent, good turnout. And I'm certainly pleased that you were part of the panel, Nancy. I know, I know you did us proud. If there is no further business to come before us, we are adjourned.